Good evening and welcome to our first budget session. It's hard to believe we are in budget season already. This is our first of three budget sessions, work sessions. And for the purpose of work sessions, that means I will interact with the board and other presenters will interact with the board. So at any point, if you have any questions or if you want to stop for clarification, please do so. This is your time to ask any clarifying questions. So for tonight, we're going to start with our budget guidelines. We're going to work through timeline and process. We're going to go through primarily our revenue sources today. We're going to hit the governor's highlights and the executive run, as well as state aid, our revenue forecast, and we'll talk briefly about our timeline moving forward as far as future work and meetings. I will share that you'll hear a theme this year, and you'll probably hear the theme next year as it runs through our work sessions and up until the budget vote, is that our costs are outpacing our revenues. And so the way we're operating right now as we do our long-term forecasts is not sustainable. And so over the next couple of years, we're going to be looking at the budget both from our current day and the following year and the year after that, and look at what reductions we're going to have to make in order to maintain a high-quality program. The hard part about budgeting in schools, one of the hardest parts, is knowing what your budget is going to be specific to foundation aid in the governor's office. So if I were just to pause there for a second, I know we'll talk about this more in a little bit under revenue. Conservatively, we budgeted for an additional $300,000 this year, expecting for $500,000 extra from last year, given the inflation and increase in costs for everything. And ultimately, we're receiving an extra $1,000. So even our conservative forecast was off going into this year. So we're going to be, instead of looking at adding or sustaining program, we will be looking through our budget work sessions at reductions this year and especially the following year at this time. As we go through our budget work sessions, I'd like you to pay particular attention to two big terms, which are two biggest sources of revenue, which would be our foundation aid and our levy and our tax cap. So if you think about why we are where we are right now, in part, it's because one of our driving sources of revenue, which is 72% of our money coming in, is from our levy, which was capped at close to zero last year. And our second major source of revenue is foundation aid, and that is about an additional $1,000. And at the same time, we have costs of doing business going up significantly. So we need to pause and take a look at collectively our staffing within our district. And a lot of that work is being done at our district planning team, and have to give them a huge thank you for the hard work they've been doing. We have talked about maintaining a sense of confidentiality in our work because we are at the point of just brainstorming areas where we can reduce costs in our overall budget. So part of our charge is to create budget guidelines, which are the driving forces of our priorities within our budget. Our challenge this year is going to be to maintain those budget guidelines, make reductions, and at the same time, ensure that we have the highest quality of education for our students in our community. So once again, as we met as a committee, we looked at the number-one priority of creating a student-based budget. And you can see all the areas within the student-based budget that we feel are incredibly important. We want students to feel comfortable while they're here, and we want to provide them with the highest level of learning possible, and you can see that reflected in this list. At the same time, understanding that all students need something different, and all students need an array of experiences in order to be their best and do their best. So we are continuing to make that a priority for our budget this year. We also know that a foundation of our success in the classroom and outside of the classroom is how well-informed we are relative to best practices in education and in teaching and learning. So professional learning continues to be a priority for all of us. In education, we're asked to do more annually. So you'll see our professional learning in basically all aspects of education. This morning, I had the privilege of observing an instructional leadership team meeting at Jeff Road Elementary School. And the topic of that conversation was around AIS as it relates to math in grades K through five. And so when we look at that first bullet, tiered supports to address range of learners in the classroom, the conversation was not just about the students that are in the middle, but the students that were way above and the students that were struggling. And as a classroom teacher, how do we meet the needs of all of those students in our classrooms? So in order to provide those tools necessary, professional learning is essential in all we do, as well as when we talk about welcoming and affirming environment, you can't just say, "We're going to do it and do it." So we need significant reinforcement of professional development relative to what that means. We want our schools to be safe from every aspect of that word. This year, we will be taking staff through a significant rollout of safety measures as it pertains to scenarios where we would have to evacuate one or multiple or all of our buildings at the same time. So again, that's resources, that's time, that's energy, that's bringing in outside consultants and spending time with all the staff that touch our students. This is a significant area, the next couple of slides, an area that we've always felt is important, but we're going to really have to have a keen eye on, and looking at ways that we're able to understand what the community expects from us, what our internal stakeholders expect for us, and develop a program, knowing that we're going to have reductions that meet those needs. So we will continue to seek innovative resources and sources of revenue. We're also contending with a lot of things from the outside that are hitting us a little bit harder each year, especially as there's more conversation about the implications of things like minimum wage and the compression and the impact that has across our board Maintaining fiscal stability now and into the future is the significant area that our district planning team is trying to work through. We will go through in a budget workshop form, the concept again of reserves, what they mean, how to use them, the plan for saving and spending out of the reserves as we look through a couple of years of tumultuous budgets. But also thinking about what we do now will impact our future. And one of our biggest cost-saving areas is having the highest bond rating possible. So when we do need to borrow and we do accrue debt, it's at the lowest rate possible, and we're able to utilize that debt to our benefit in future budgets as it impacts everything from our tax cap to a level debt model. Advocacy with our legislators is ongoing. I don't want to lose sight of that. We've already been to Albany once. We have been on webinars with senators and assembly members. And then just this past weekend, we had our Monroe County School Board's Legislative Breakfast, where not only we attended and interacted with our legislators, but we also brought students, and including a Pittsburgh student who spoke so eloquently relative to the importance of mental health and to make sure that that line is in the budget somewhere. So with that, our work will continue around the guise of budget guidelines. And I will just share with the board that anytime you look at reductions, there's no reduction that you can make that feels good. So we're going to look at the reductions adjacent to our budget guidelines and try to keep reductions to a point where it's not impacting students in a negative way relative to their experience in Pittsburgh schools. So with that, it's my pleasure to bring up Assistant Superintendent for Business, Michael Vesby.
Thanks so much, Mike. I appreciate it. It's always great to work as a team and to have a partnership with board members and superintendents that really understand the financial impact of the executive proposal and a multi-year budget perspective. It makes my job easier, knowing that we've got a teamwork approach, a very collaborative approach, and it's not just, you know, the financial person, if you will, taking ownership for some of these very challenging situations. So I really appreciate everyone's effort to really to understand this and for taking the time to listen, because quite honestly, some of this can get a little dry in terms of the details. So we'll try to keep it at a high level. So we're right on schedule in terms of our budget timeline and process. The biggest thing is that, and we've talked a lot about this, and Mr. Peril has mentioned the process in terms of reductions, we're already at a good point now, not only for preparing for this year, but also looking ahead to next year, depending on the news. So, you know, this is a good time to look at it, but I think, you know, this timeline also outlines that the budget process doesn't just happen after the executive proposal in January. It's a year-round process, right? It starts with long-range financial planning over the summer, preparing and being prepared going into the executive proposal, and then making those challenging choices to balance the budget, you know, in our next few workshops. So as was previously shared, our two main revenue sources are the tax levy and state aid, and then some other sources that are minimal. I'm going to flip the order tonight, and we're going to jump right into state aid. And the biggest aspect of this proposal is that there's less of a total percent of funds dedicated for school aid. So that's striking. There's only a 2.1% increase in foundation aid, and we're used to seeing that higher. Obviously, the history of the restoration or the full phase in of this foundation aid formula resulted in those higher increases. And then expense-driven aids are in line with what we'd expect. But this proposal indicates a return to a budget gamemanship, if you will, where the executive proposal that's put out is less with the notion that there's going to be a give-and-take and a negotiation process. We've returned back to a manipulation of particular aspects of the formula itself. So we deviated from what's an enacted law. We did that by two ways, right? The proposal that came from the governor was 337 districts will go off of what's called a save harmless or hold harmless provision, where they're guaranteed at least the minimum amount of aid that they received in the prior year. Now typically, what's happened in the last few years is there was a minimum guarantee on that base, so a percentage increase. So you're guaranteed to get what you got in the previous year, plus 3%, right? So we had a very fiscally conservative estimate, thinking we're fully phased in now. We're a wealthier district in comparison to the state average in the local area. We're going to get that 3%. That's not what happened. So districts were not guaranteed a base amount plus a percentage. That was removed. So there's 337 districts that are actually getting less aid in this proposal. Some are catastrophic, right? So districts that are in rural areas are devastated by this. Some don't know how they're going to open the door. It was that kind of loss. The other thing that happened was in the foundation aid formula itself, it's very complex, but the CPI factor used to do an annual increase was manipulated. The lowest and highest amounts were removed, resulting in a CPI increase of 2.4%. So consumer price index, you know, basically is inflation, cost of goods and services, for example, what you pay for groceries and products, et cetera, right? That's running closer to about that 4.1% that you'll see later in the tax cap. Now it's been artificially lowered to 2.4. So we worked tirelessly for years, from a school business official standpoint, to have this fair and equitable formula, right, that focused on some of these areas, and that's been arbitrarily manipulated in this proposal. Just in general, I want to point out, and I'll go off on a little bit of a tangent here, is you notice a reduction in building aid statewide. So there's a return to focus at the state level to really try to disallow adable aspects of the project. There's going to be less projects with rising interest rates, et cetera, normally, but that was a noticeable difference. You see the decrease statewide in textbook aid based on general enrollment statewide. And then the building reorg incentive aid, et cetera, that's just because there's less school districts that are merging. That's really what that is. But there's the overall percentage. Just some interesting things. I won't focus on all of these, but things that could impact the district. There is the recognition that transportation aid needs to be adjusted based on federal funds that are available for electric buses. There's a recommendation to establish new practices in reading K-3. This was an interesting one, and we'll see if it holds up, where the school district would be responsible for making sure that parents have filled out a FAFSA, or at least reporting the data and that coordination, and then providing data to the State Education Department. Again, I think a positive focus, but putting more responsibility on the school district without allocating the resources to do so. Repealing the COVID-19 sick leave law, but on the same time, increasing some time for disability leaves and funding, and then funds for school-based health centers and student mental health grants. And this is one of those things where it's grant work, and on Saturday, we talked about there's money allocated for this. Why not turn that into something where all of the increased and enhanced services that we had for mental health services, why not make that an expense-driven aid so that we know it's being used for that purpose? Because we know that that crisis still exists and is going to continue to exist going forward. Quick history, you're probably sick of reading this, but remember, we've been fighting the foundation aid battle since 2007, and obviously longer before that. It was enacted in 2007. It was supposed to be, we were supposed to be fully funded in 2012. That was put on hold because of the financial crisis in 2008. And then we finally received our full share of foundation aid funding in this current year. So we've waited for over 12 years. As Mr. Peril said, we've received a proposal this year for $1,161 as an increase in foundation Just a history, so you can see a gradual increase in the last three years that ramp up of foundation aid. So we're happy that we've been fully funded in foundation aid, but we were hoping to continue on with some of that funding to help support our programs and services. I revamped a slide that has been used in the past, and I think this is very effective to tell the story about foundation aid. So the blue bars represent what the district should have received and when the district should have received it. And the, you know, the red bar represents what the real story was. So you can see, we're happy that in '23, '24, that we were fully funded, but now it's gone flat again. And there's no understanding and no guidance as to what's going to happen in the future. So I know that this was discussed in the past, that the district was about over $100,000 in arrears of money that should have been provided to the school district over that timeframe. So this tells the story, we're right back to where we were going back to 2007. So that's what we have to deal with as we go forward in terms of a revenue forecast. And again, I think this tells a story that we're here, and now it's capped and probably going to be flat for some time. So this is, I always like to show this, and again, I'll briefly outline this. You'll hear that the district was allocated 3.53%. That's what's on social media, that's what you'll see in the official reports and printouts. The reality is it's minus .5 because we will not receive that universal pre-K funding, right? And that's included. If you look at our largest increase, that's the largest increase. So it doesn't tell the true story. And then certainly, and I'll highlight this in the next screen, is some of these are estimates that are provided. So we tried to go through and balance this, but the real story is, right, we're receiving the 1,161 in new money foundation aid, but that's really it, right? The rest of it is a net decrease. Even when we go through, right, we know we're going to spend a little bit more money in BOSIs, so we're going to probably get more aid. So that's highlighted in green. We know that we're not going to get the high excess costs and private excess cost estimates, right? Those are estimates based on a November database. We're going to get less, and we even, you know, just threw in a conservative number for now. And then transportation aid, we're going to get more, but we're not going to spend all of it right now. We're certainly going to spend more in the future, though, because remember, we've been using funds to offset transportation costs. And then we're going to get a little bit more in building aid than they say. But what's the real story? When we face future challenges, we receive the least amount of state support out of any district in the county. So oftentimes, there'll be a lot of questions and comparisons, "Why can't we?" and then fill in the blank compared to another district, because our revenue mix is not the same as in other districts. Typically, you see a 50-50 split or even a 60-40 split. In Pittsburgh, the least amount of revenue overall in the budget, right, is that category comes in state aid compared to the 72% that comes from the tax levy. I'll pause there. Questions about state aid picture? I just love saying the $1,161, or $61. I love doing that. It just highlights the fact that we're sideways in terms of state support, and I think it really brings home the fact that even if it was a conservative estimate, that's still, you know, a larger support than what we actually received. Questions? Okay.
Hey, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask, Mike, what's the justification they're giving for going, estimating CPI at 2.4% when it's much more like 4%? Like, what's the justification?
You never quite know what's behind the manipulation of the formula. Usually, we find out it was to drive money to a certain group, but we usually don't find out until after. Now, again, keep in mind, we're back to the same process. Last year, it was out-of-the-gate, a great proposal. We don't think much is going to change, and it didn't. This year, we're back to, we're going to manipulate this, we're going to remove this, and then that's a bargaining chip. So we don't know what will happen and what will be replaced. But certainly, it was the spirit to drive less money across the board in the formula because the CPI factor is factored in the formula statewide.
The other question I had is in the hold harmless, those districts that, and we're one of those districts.
We're not a hold harmless district.
Oh, we're not a hold harmless district?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Yeah.
But those districts are guaranteed a minimum of, the minimum of what they were given the previous year.
Yeah.
Plus 3%. They're not getting that 3% in most cases, but they are still getting that guaranteed minimum from the previous.
No, actually, it's, the formula was allowed to run based on actual enrollment, so they are actually not guaranteed anything. They're receiving less funds. So if you look back to 2008, '09, I have a different chart that I can share with you that we did at a statewide presentation just actually last week. But in that case, there were school districts that were fully funded in, let's say, '15, '16, '16, '17, right? So some districts were fully funded, others still had to wait. And the idea was to fully fund the districts who relied the most on state aid based on wealth factors. So it's understandable why we didn't receive full funding until the end, right, based on our combined wealth ratio. So what can you do when you've got some districts that are fully funded and others that aren't? You guaranteed them the same amount as the previous year. The true formula didn't run as it pertained to enrollment, so you guaranteed them the same amount, but they also needed a minimum guarantee to sustain their operations. So that was hold harmless plus a 3% increase. What happened when you remove that is the bottom fell out for all those districts that have been artificially kind of held harmless, you know, during that time. So that's why it's so catastrophic for some of those districts. And quite, in almost every instance, those are the districts that have the least amount of wealth factors that rely on state aid the most. That's why in particular, the rural school districts have been really hammered by this proposal. Does that make more sense?
Mike, if you could just go back one slide, this is part of our problem. If you think about where we are right now, we're the lowest possible state aid in the county. And last year, we were the lowest tax cap in the county.
Yes.
Two sources of revenue are the lowest possible. And that's tough when you think about sustainability and the cost of doing business relative to expenditures in a school. It's why we are, part of the reason why we are right now. The other thing that I think is of note, you use the words wealth ratio in the foundation formula. If you think about Pittsburgh, Bryan, Maryburg, Webster, all of those schools that are right next to us that are up much higher in the state aid range, we are the, the way the formula runs, we are the lowest of the grouping.
Right.
Is classified as high wealth.
Yep.
Because we're not a high-wealth district. And as far as state is concerned, we're kind of middle of the state, but as far as the formula is concerned, we are among them, Long Island, New York, the districts that have twice or more wealth ratio than we do.
Yeah, if the average is...
The formula runs the same for all of them.
Right. If the average is one, we're just slightly above it, but that puts us in that other category. So when you look at the state, it's average, but when you look at the area, it's higher. So, you know, it's interesting, because I look back at some previous presentations, and I know this will come up in discussion, but one of the talking points of this used to be, before there was a tax cap, in times when state aid, you know, when state aid was lean like this and there was manipulation, you would be in an okay position because the least amount of your revenue is derived from the source. So what you would do is if you needed to, you know, levy 3% or 4%, you'd make up the difference, and you could do that because 70% of your revenue plus came from that source. Well, now that's capped. So as Mike says, it's on both ends, right? You're definitely not going to rely more on the state aid, and you're capped to be able to make up the difference on taxes. So that's where you can't really win, where the argument used to be, "Well, wealthier districts, you don't have to worry about this because you can, you know, you're not impacted as much. You can get it from the tax levy." But now you can't because it's capped. So we'll jump into the tax levy as the other major revenue source. As we said, 72%. It's now capped. There's not an appetite to have, there's not a political appetite in all of our advocacy to even talk about this or have it changed, when in fact, it's arbitrarily impacted by inflation, and I'll show that. So I just keep this on here because the formula is convoluted, right? Your payment in lieu of taxes impacts the fact you're allowed, there's an allowable growth factor, which we know is at 2, and then there's a tax-based growth factor. These are all factors that are out of the district's control that impacts the calculation. And then essentially, we take the district's principal and interest and subtract it from the aid that we get from the state for capital projects. Spent a lot of time looking at that last year. That changed what are, from a negative to a slightly positive tax cap situation, right? So we spent a lot of time talking about that capital exclusion. This year, because the employee retirement system rates are rising higher than 2%, there's a slight exemption or exclusion for that amount. So I'll show that. So I like to just put probably too much detail, but I like to put the detail... So I like to just put probably too much detail, but I like to put the details in so you have it. So this kind of outlines some of the factors. And then we subtract from the coming year so we don't overtax the pilots, and you can see the debt service, and that changes every year, but obviously predictable. New this year, we've got that pension exclusion, 23,000. So all in all, we're calculating the tax cap to be at 2.69 percent this year. So the total amount to be raised is about $3 million. Here's a brief history of the, of the tax levy, and this includes really the whole duration, almost the whole duration of tax cap. So you can see it's really been relatively flat since 2002. And then obviously, last year, .08, just a very slight amount in terms of the increase. Most of the tax rate, that tax rates that you saw on there actually went down last year, right? Because we had such a small increase. And in some cases, people probably saw reductions unless they had assessments increase, which we don't control. So it's, it's been relatively flat from a historical standpoint. Here's what's, here's really what the challenge is. If you look at inflation, it's come down from a factor of 8 to 4.12, and you can see how it's come down month over month compared to the previous year. It's coming down, but it's still not at 2. So what does that do? So I think, I'm glad that the comptroller releases this every year because this really illustrates the challenge. When this was so-called good legislation and approved, inflation was nil. So there was actually a reverse impact, and we lived by it. Now that it's gone the other direction, there's just a huge disparity between our costs, wage inflation, costs of products and goods inflation, and capped at the 2 percent. It's not even in the same ballpark. So technically, there should be an adjustment where we should be able to go at a higher percent increase without being subject to a penalty to just keep up with general costs and services. And this is what's holding us back, and this is the challenge. So it's not just about state aid in terms of the revenue challenge, this is a huge challenge, and we know that it's wildly popular and supported from a political standpoint, so there's probably not going to be a lot of change. But it's up to us to explain how this is impacting our overall budget.
Question on that? I mean, why is it so politically popular when this is probably playing out for lots of districts?
It plays well in the media, right, in terms of capping taxes, but to understand and talk about the specifics with the formula, people don't know enough about it, just a select group of people. But what's going to happen in the future if state aid continues to stay stagnant, and the only other revenue source is the tax levy? You may see districts have enough courage to start trying to exceed that levy limit, which we know has a horrible passage rate. But that's it. I don't think politically that that formula is going to change when in fact, there's a huge, three years in a row, huge discrepancy between the 2 and closest percent of 4. Great question.
What is the passage rate?
On the override?
Yeah.
It's not good. It's like, it's like 10 percent. Yeah. Yeah, it's not good. But we'll see what happens. Here's the real challenge, and I'll talk more about this, you know, from a long-range financial planning standpoint. Because these factors are very predictable and well-known, and we have a debt service schedule, we kind of know what the tax cap's going to look like into the future. So this isn't just a one-year situation. We know what we're going to be able to get from a revenue standpoint in future years, right? You can, you can really kind of forecast that out. And when we get to the budget itself, and we look at what our budget-to-budget increase looks like on an annual basis, and this is our main revenue source, this almost would suggest that our budget-to-budget increase needs to stay within this limit. And I can tell you that our budget-to-budget increase is about three times what you see here. So this is really a challenge for the future, not for tonight, but just, you know, thinking about it going forward. Once again, we know this, we rely the most in the county on the tax levy. Really, I provided a summary, I'm not going to go through these. We've talked about every one of these factors that takes place. Certainly, I keep a close eye on the debt service schedule because it does have an impact on the capital exclusion. So it's, it's something that we have to talk about. The other thing is, we do the right thing by paying cash for buses. We save the money and pay cash, we don't have financing. It actually works against us when we do that because it doesn't factor into the tax cap calculation. So that might be something, as we go forward, that we look at and have to make decisions. So the, March 1st is the deadline, they opened the site up today, so we'll make sure that that's submitted in time for the compliance aspect. Kind of put it all together, early revenue forecasts, tax levy about 3 million, state aid negative 121, so new revenue is about 2.8. The good news is this, and this is why, you know, we're in relatively good shape in the, in the early revenue forecast, is because we were very conservative on our previous state aid estimates, and we talked about this last year. It came to fruition, so it doesn't look as bad this year from a budget-to-budget comparison. So the concern really doesn't rest this year, it rests with next year, knowing that we're going to true the budget up in this budget proposal and then face the challenge in the future. So it's, it's great that we were conservative last year, that really helps us get through this year's budget process, given the information that we have. We're also, the Fed did not lower interest rates as was expected, so we continue, as you see in the Treasurers report, continue to have really good interest earnings, and then we're still seeing sales tax increases year over year as well. So the last thing that I'll say, and certainly something we'll talk about in the future, is we'll need to look at how much we allocate going forward in reserves and fund balances to help offset some of these increased expenses without having the offsetting revenue. So next steps really is to continue, as Mr. Piro said, work with the district planning team, look for possible reductions on this year's budget gap, look at staffing. We're in the process of evaluating all of our BOSI services. That process goes till early April. We're going to wait to see what happens in the legislative budget. Last year, when we did this revenue forecast, we knew that's probably what we were going to get. This year, it's back to the same games where we may not know, when you're asked to approve a budget in April, there might not be an on-time approved budget. So we'll have to wait and see and monitor if we get any additional funding in the legislative budget. We're hoping that we will. And certainly, we're going to continue our advocacy efforts. I think we've made some great relationships. Sarah, the work that you've done in Monroe County School Boards has been amazing. This is just an outline of our future sessions, more to follow. All right, well, thanks so much, and next we'll have Sean Clark give the HR update.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. Glad to be here to share just an overview of where we are in terms of human resources and, and what that does pertains to the budget. Just an overview of our areas of responsibility. So our department does do quite a bit of work. We've been heavily focused on the staff hiring, the retention of staff, onboarding, assignments, the sectioning at the elementary level, all the work that happens at the middle and high schools as well. Contract negotiations, I'll give you an update on that later on. Labor relations and contract administration, so interpreting the contract and working through any issues that come up. Leadership development with our new administrators and our current administrators as well, and then the evaluation process through APPR for both administrators and teachers. So just some highlights that you'll see in this report, so just overall with the budget, some information about sectioning and staffing, and that aligns well with what Superintendent Piro talked about and what Mr. Vesby talked about. Just some trends to note, a little bit about our hiring that we've done over the last year, and then where we are in terms of contract negotiations. So specifically to the Human Resources Department, our budget, most of our money is in salaries. We have two administrators, we have a Human Resources clerical person, that's Tammy Vanderbilt, and then we also have a personnel clerk. So most of our budget goes into those salaries benefits. We also have teacher fellows, we have three teacher fellows this semester working at our elementary buildings. Again, that's a cost-driven aid, so we do get some of that money back. Our contracted services, that goes into people that we bring in to help with, you'll see the number of hires that we've done. We do bring in some outside help on occasion in order to facilitate, facilitate those processes. Our interview committees, we do budget for any of the interview committee work that happens outside of the school day. Our employees can submit time sheets for that, so that budget does impact us, and then our BOSI services. Just a little bit of an overview as far as our budget history since 2019. So you'll see the, the increase over time. The big difference when you look at '21, '22 to '22, '23, there was a staff member who was not budgeted in the Human Resources budget, but did work kind of within our department. That money, so it's not the significant jump that you see, it's money that was in another area of the budget that was just added to our budget. And then you'll see the increase for the last couple of years. We are looking at a 3.9 percent increase. Some of the work that we've done this year with internal auditing, we've, we have needed to bring in additional supports. Confidential retiree in the clerical unit has been helping us out. One of the findings that, that was a result of our audit showed that we had documents within our personnel files that had to be separated. So medical documentation has to be in a separate location from an employee's file, we didn't have that in place. So with over 1,100 files that have to be gone through and those, those items separated, we did need additional help to do that. Another no, typically, year to year, we tend to send back between $40,000 and $60,000 back to the general fund. A little bit of information about elementary sectioning. So you'll see a trend, the gold bars or the section totals from '23, '24, and then kind of where we're headed, what we're planning for. So currently this year, we have 115 sections at the elementary level, that's kindergarten through fifth grade. And what we're looking at for next year, it's always, this is the time of year we start looking at those numbers, and we use what are called planning numbers. So at kindergarten and first grade, our planning numbers are 23 students per section. For our second and third grade, it's 24, fourth and fifth grade, it's 25. Again, those are planning numbers that we use in July, it's usually a meeting that happens at the very end of July. And we use those numbers to create a buffer so we don't go over the contractual numbers because the last thing we would want to do in December, January, is to get an influx of students that would break contractual numbers. Now we're looking at adding another section, nobody wants to do that to kids or to parents or to teachers. So we build in that flexibility. So in looking at potential for next school year, we are monitoring potentially three sections. There's a rising first grade class at Jefferson Road, a rising first grade class at Mendon Center, and there's a rising second grade class at Park Road that we're monitoring. So 115 this year, potentially 118 next year. That would be kind of a worst-case scenario. The superintendent asked a great question a few days ago, what are the, the section numbers, what do they look like over a five-year span? So I do have that data to share. Obviously, '21 or 2021, that's, that's our COVID year, so the significant jump with our elementary sections that year, that includes all of our remote classes. So that was in-person, that was remote as well, and then you'll see it kind of dropped and stabilized a bit in '21, '22. That was my first year, I remember that pretty well because the difference when you look at '19, '20 and '21, '22, we were expecting that '21, '22 would be more in line to '19, '20. We always have what are called bubble sections, and that's what I shared in the previous slide, where you're really close to maybe breaking sections and going above. Typically, we could have eight to 10, or maybe even more, bubble sections, and rarely do they ever break. That was the year that, of course, all of them broke, so we had to add eight sections that year that we were not planning for. Since then, it's, it's kind of stabilized, it does fluctuate up and down a little bit, and we're the end with 115 for this year and potentially 118 next year. Our middle and high school staffing, middle school tends to be the most stable because of that team model, it's very predictable that way. Our secondary staffing has been impacted by some pretty substantially difficult to fill positions. Last Friday, I was at an HR regional meeting, and all of us are dealing with some significant struggles in areas like technology, special education, especially at the secondary level, areas of science and mathematics. Technology, for example, there are just a few programs across the state that actually have a technology education program, and, and they're struggling to fill students, and then all districts are trying to recruit those folks. So those are, those are some real challenges in terms of staffing for those positions. This, what I thought was a helpful slide that Mr. Vesby provided. It shows, I'll try to break it down for you. So what you see here is really, it's a ratio comparison of our student-to-staff ratio. If you go back 10 years ago, you're looking at about 11.6 students per staff member, and then if you look ahead to where we are now, that number has dropped, so the ratio has dropped, so we actually have more staff per student, so that ratio is now 10.2. And that factors in teachers, counselors, psychologists, our AIS teachers, social workers, so, so people that really are working closely with children, not people that, that work in the, in the support roles around the building, but more of that direct support. So you see that ratio has gone down. So just some staffing trends. In '18, '19, our adopted budget included 1,111 full-time employees. So the proposed budget this year has 1,197. So, you know, if you look at the trend, about 17 additional FTEs each year, so that's totaling about 86 additional full-time staff between '18, '19 and '24, '25. So in summary, as the superintendent shared, as Mr. Vesby shared, the cost of staffing over time, when you're looking at a school district, we're in the business of human beings, so most of our budget is in people. So that staffing over time is outpacing our income revenue, which was really well highlighted, and then that, that means we need to really look at our annual versus our long-range planning and making sure that we're being as fiscally responsible as possible, but also meeting the needs of our students and the expectations of our community. So this is a helpful, I think, just in terms of capturing our hiring and what we've done over the past year. So administrative hires, we had two elementary principals, a CSE coordinator, coordinator for both social-emotional learning and equity and inclusivity, a new director of athletics, and then, you know, the plan about assistant superintendent for instruction, I'll share more about that in my professional staff report. We've added 37 certificated staff, 16 regular substitutes. A regular substitute is a substitute teacher that is in for a semester or more, 55 school-related professionals, and then 39 support staff. So a lot of hiring that's happened this past year, and we continue to add staff. You see that every board meeting with the professional and support staff reports. So our areas of focus continue to be trying to recruit staff, science teachers, technology, special education, our support staff, we're always trying to find bus drivers and monitors, food service workers, our custodians, school aides, and safety and security personnel. So that hiring and retaining of really good quality staff. As far as contract negotiations, we have three contracts that we're currently looking at, our administrators, so that's our principals and some of our district-level administration, our supervisory and technical unit, and then our managerial and confidential, that will be forthcoming. So we'll share more information with you about those as those get closer to conclusion. So. Are there any questions?
Just a point of clarification, again, looking at reductions is, is like, is a puzzle, and it's really difficult at different levels. So when I think about elementary schools, the majority of our elementary school budget is driven by class size and the respective staff associated with whatever amount of students divided by a certain number equals the amount of staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In our middle schools, as you said, are pretty constant year after year, it's essentially been a rollover budget because of our teaming and enrichment concept. And then at the, the high school is the area where we see more flexibility because of the amount of offerings we offer students, is that pretty fair to say?
That's very fair to say, yes.
Thanks.
And, and the impact of those offerings with the staff that we can get for, you know, certain areas like technology, we can offer the programs, but if we don't have the staff to carry those out, then that doesn't work out very well either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think that concludes our budget workshop.
Thank you all. Thank you Superintendent Pirro for the overview, and Assistant Superintendent Vesby, and Mr. Clark for your presentations, and we will take a small break before our business meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.